Are we ready to begin? Great, we're ready, thank you. The Central Unified Board of Trustees meeting for March 9, 2021 is called to order at 6:07. Just a friendly reminder, if you participate in today's meeting, your likeness may be recorded as we are broadcasting and recording today's meeting. And with that, please let the record reflect that all board members are in attendance. Our next item is adoption of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board on the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Chan, I have a second by trustee Cervantes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, unanimous support. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. Next, we will take any comments from the public regarding our closed session item. We will allow 30 seconds to pass before we move on to closed session. So at this time, if there is any member of the public wishing to address the board regarding any of the closed session items, the number to dial is 559-276-3150.
President Creo, we do not have any calls or anyone on the line at this point.
Thank you. And with that, we will now adjourn to closed session and return to our open session at 7:00 PM or as soon as thereafter. Thank you. Okay, we're ready to go live. The board reconvenes from closed session. Items to report from closed session, the certificated personnel report was passed by a vote of 7-0, motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Brooks. The classified personnel report, motion also carried, vote also carried motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Solis. And with that, we move on to the rest of our agenda. Just a friendly reminder to the members joining us from home, if you wish to speak during the comments from the public or any agenda item, please make sure you dial 559-276-3150 when the item is called. And so our next item is pledge of allegiance, vice president Solis.
Could you all please stand and face the flag?
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We move on to our presentations. First, we will hear from school activities, first we will hear our school activities presentation, Central High East ASB president Damian Casares.
Yes, President Creo, he's calling in, just give us about 10 seconds.
Thank you. And also just a reminder to the board members, if you wish to speak, make sure that you turn on your mic so that everyone, not only here at the meeting can hear you, but anyone watching the broadcast.
Hello, Damian, are you on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, you are on with the board, thank you.
Hi Damian, go ahead. Damian, can you hear us?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Okay. Hi guys, I'm Damian Casares, I'm ASB president at East Campus. I'm just going to update you guys on current and future events going on at Central. So from the, from March 8th to the 12th, we are giving blood donations to the Central California Blood Center. Our objective for today was to donate to the Valley Children's Hospital Kids Day. On March 10th, we are going to donate supplies to the CCSPA at East Campus from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. On March 11th, we are going to make a virtual card to send to patients at St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital. And on March 12th, we are going to shower our seniors by adopting a senior via Facebook. Also, seniors are invited to a drive-through breakfast from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. In the future, we are planning a chicken week, so stay tuned for more information on that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item, employee association highlights. Do we have a representative from Central Unified Teachers Association joining us today?
Yes, she will be calling in in about five seconds.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Martinez?
Yes, this is Judy.
Hello, you are on with the board.
Good evening, board trustees, superintendent. Tonight I have a few positives that I would love to share with you. First of all, we have a first grader from Roosevelt, Reagan Hamlin, whose science project advanced to the district and will be receiving a Rising Star Award. A big congratulations to Reagan Hamlin. And as you all probably know, last week was Read Across America, and many of our sites did something very special for their students. And what was shared with us at the set meeting was Harvest had several guest readers, including radio personality Danny Solis from Q97, Kuku Kangaroo, Liz Gonzalez from KMPH, and a few names that you may recognize, Mrs. Katty Davis, Ms. Sonia Doski, and Mr. Robert Perez. And today, TUDA had a question and answer for our transitional and kindergarten teachers regarding the MOU that we disagreed upon with our district. And thankfully, Mrs. Davis was also there to answer questions that our showcase through second grade teachers had. As you can imagine, there's a lot of anxiety. But as I, as I said to our teachers today, I said, they are, they will be, and they will be very well prepared, that our admin is there to support them, and they are our heroes. And we continue to thank them for the dedication to our students. So again, thank you, Mrs. Katty, Mrs. Katty Davis for being there. We also had Dr. Boatwright, and Mr. Jeff Garrett was also in attendance. So again, thank you for that. And lastly, board members, we look forward to seeing you, or I look forward to seeing you, at the school board dinner on Friday. Thank you for RSVP. As always, we thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, President Martinez. Next, we will hear from California School Employees Association. Mr. Chacon, President Chacon? Can you make sure you turn on your mic? Is it on?
There it is.
There you go, thank you.
How about now, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Long time no see, I guess that'd be the proper way to say it, for you guys, the new board members, hello, I'm Philip Chacon, CSA president. Well, not much to report at this time, but I would like to just let you guys know that Classified is really excited about bringing kids back. We are, you know, missing that interaction with the kids. Food service people are, as I spoke with them, are, you know, ready, you know, they're, you know, as much as they have been passing out food and delivering food to the vehicles, they still miss that interaction with the kids. So custodians, everybody's, you know, it's the buzz around the school, they're coming back, they're coming back, so we are excited, we are prepping and everything to be ready when the staff and everybody comes back. If you guys get a chance, stop on by, visit your guys' school sites. I think most of the Classified would be really thrilled to see some of the board members stop on by, maybe give your guys' input, maybe see something that could be addressed, another set of fresh eyes, and we'll go from there. But we are ready and we are doing what we need to do to make sure that it's safe and we'll make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, President Chacon. Next, we will have superintendent and board communications. Is there any board member wishing to speak? Trustee Chan?
I just wanted to share that I had an opportunity to join a CSBA webinar on redistricting. The materials on the CSBA website, I think it's something that we're going to have to address as the census information comes later this summer, so I just wanted to give a heads up. So if you get a chance, they put the slide deck and the recording on there, and would encourage anybody to take a look.
Thank you, trustee Chan. Anyone else? I just, I know many of us have the feelings and thoughts, but I just want to say them out loud and just thank all of our teachers, all of our administration, all of our parents, thank you for your support and everything you have been doing during this distance learning. And we are seeing light at the end of the tunnel, so please stay strong, and we look forward to moving forward and continuing to support our teachers, our administration, our staff, however we are able to during these COVID times. So just again, thank you everyone for all that you're doing. And with that, we move on to comments from the public. So at this time, any members of the public wishing to address the board? If you are watching us from home or from wherever you may be watching us, the number to dial is 559-276-3150. Please remember that this item is for any item not currently on the agenda. And so we will allow 30 seconds to pass before we move on to our next item. And if we have any members in the audience wishing to address the board, please bring forward your information slips and we can take your comment during comments from the public.
President Creo, I think there was about a 20-second delay, so we just need about 10, about 15 more seconds if we can.
Not a problem. And while we wait for time to pass and for any callers wishing to address the board during this public comment, to dial in, just a friendly reminder, if there are any other members of the public wishing to speak on any agenda item, please dial 559-276-3150 when the item is called. Once the item is presented, we will take any public comment. Public comment will then be closed and board discussion will begin.
Okay, at this point, we do not have any calls.
Thank you. And so with that, we move on to our consent agenda. Do we have any public comment? What are the wishes of the board on the consent agenda? Okay, I have a motion by trustee Chan, is there a second? I have a second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, 7-0. Next, we move on to action items. Our first item is item L1, adopt resolution number 2021-28, the matter of elimination and reduction of particular kinds of services for the 2021-2022 school year. Assistant Superintendent Collegian?
Thank you, President Creo. Tats for the consideration is the board resolution 2021-28 in the matter of the elimination and reduction of particular kind of services for the 21-22 school year. These procedures have been initiated pursuant to ed code sections 44949 and 44955. This decrease will not impact specialized services nor eliminate academic programs, including CTE pathways, nor will it impact any tenured certificated staff. The elimination of these sections result in the need to decrease the number of probationary certificated staff by the equivalent of 10 full-time employees. Employees affected by this will have the right to be rehired in the Order of Seniority at any time within 24 months of the layoff period in the event there is a vacancy in that specific subject area. Administration is recommending approval of this resolution. Happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Collegian. Before we open the floor for discussion by the board, I do want to take any public comment. So again, if there is any member of the public wishing to address the board, the number to dial is 559-276-3150.
President Creo, I know that we do have a call, so I'm waiting to get the information and they're going to transfer the call to me.
Thank you. Each speaker will have a minute and a half to address the board. Our clerk, trustee Brooks, will be controlling the timer. So again, if you are watching, we just ask that you please be respectful of the time. You will have a minute and a half to address the board, at which time I will remind you that your minute has concluded and we will move on to our next speaker. Thank you.
Hello, do we have Courtney Ira Baron?
Hi.
Hi, you are on with the board, you have one minute.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Courtney Ira Baron, and I am one of the founding members of the Coalition Students Care. We, with the support of the student body, continue to stand by our teachers. We are paying attention and involved in these decisions and ask that you do not vote to lay off 10 non-year teachers, 10 teachers tonight. You have heard our arguments in the past month, and we ask once again that you think about the points we made, including the loyalty of teachers, the connection between the six block schedule and laying off these teachers, and the opportunity to keep these teachers and not raise class sizes any more than we need to. The local media has already written two articles on this topic in support of teachers' jobs, and CARE continues to call students to action. We remind, we remind you that students are still involved in this decision months later and implore you not to give 10 teachers their notice tonight. Thank you for your charity thus far. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
We do have another call coming in. Hello, do we have Alondra Sierra on the line? Hello?
Hello?
Hello, is this Alondra Sierra?
Yes.
Hi, you are on with the board, you have one minute.
And I'm sorry, they have a minute and a half.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a minute and a half, I apologize.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board, my name is Alondra Sierra, and I am a former high school student from Central East. I have decided to call today because I am very concerned about the decision to potentially lay off our 10 valuable teachers. These are 10 individuals who have made sacrifices and invested so much of their time, energy, and resources into this district. These are exceptional leaders who have worked incredibly hard to be a part of this district, and they continue to do so by dedicating themselves to their students and this community. They've become resources for both students and parents during these tough times. Please keep in mind that these individuals have families who depend on them as a main source of income. These essential workers deserve to have job security. On behalf of all of my community members, we ask that you please reconsider this decision of the elimination of these positions, excuse me, as the elimination of these positions will not only harm the trust of your community, but also of the remaining teachers in this district as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
At this time, we don't have any other callers in the queue.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments from the public, we will now close our public comment session and open our discussion with the board. Are there any comments or questions from the board? I just want to say that this item is not an easy item. Many of us, actually, I'm sure I don't speak out of turn when I say that, none of us take this decision lightly. We value all of our educators, but we also understand, and I understand, our fiscal responsibility to ensure that we are making decisions that keep us fiscally responsible as we move forward. We've heard this item now on two occasions, three occasions, one as an information item and second time as an action item. And administration has assured us that this item, if motion carries to approve, will not impact our classroom sizes. I know we've heard from many of our communities, or from many of our speakers from the community stating that they fear that classroom sizes will increase or that programs will be eliminated. And so please correct me, assistant superintendents, if I am incorrect, but you have represented to us that that is not going to occur and that programs won't be eliminated as a result of this resolution.
President Creo, this is true.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other comments or questions, what are the wishes of the board on this item?
With a very heavy heart, a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by trustee Cervantes, is there a second? I have a second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And I will also register a yes vote. Any opposed?
One.
Okay, so I have opposition by trustee Chan and trustee Mayling. Any abstentions? Okay, and with that, motion carries. 5-2. Our next item is item L2, approve the 2020-2021 second interim budget report. Assistant Superintendent McLean?
Thank you, President Creo. It's my pleasure to bring to you a presentation tonight on the second interim report, which is a year-to-date report that we do through January 31st of 2021. And I'm going to, the first couple of slides, I'll kind of move fairly quickly because I think a lot of the meat of the presentation is kind of on the back end. So this slide, these are slides that we usually show at each interim report showing our enrollment trends and our ADA trends, and you can see where we're at for this year. Our estimated enrollment, we take an annual enrollment as of the first week of October, and we're down just about a little over half a percent, which really isn't a big number. And given the circumstances we're in this year, it's probably doing better than a lot of other districts may be faring, but just a slight decrease, but fairly, holding fairly steady. Our attendance tends to do well. This is just a chart showing our per-student rates for funding for the different grade levels. This is the LCFF formulas that have been in effect for the last eight or nine years. As you know, we get additional dollars for supplemental and concentration grants for low-income English learner and foster youth, and that is what drives our LCAP program, which we will be talking about in the next couple of months. Next slide. It's just an overview of our revenue and how it breaks down between unrestricted and restricted dollars. Again, this is more kind of reference material, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time there. And a chart here that breaks down how our funds are broken out between the base grant for LCFF, supplemental and concentration grants, and then we have a separate allocation for transportation. So next slide. Again, I'll allow for some questions at the end of the time of the presentation. This is our second interim revenue update. 70% of our revenues do come from the LCFF formula funds, and then we get federal and other state revenues as well, but LCFF makes up the large majority of those funds. Next slide. Changes since the first interim, we did have about a little over a million and a half dollars increase in our unduplicated account. Again, these are, are those categories I just mentioned a minute ago, where we get extra funding. And kudos to our staff at all the schools who were working towards receiving the applications that we needed from the families, and kudos to our families for turning those in to be able to increase our unduplicated count by 194 students, which will help us with our revenues this year and the years to come. The other big piece is you see 17.9 million dollar increase in federal revenue, and that's primarily because of the one-time funding that we are getting with the COVID relief dollars. One category of that, which I'll be talking about more later, is called ESER 2. And we got 17.8 million dollars that was added on between the first interim and second interim. The other changes are fairly minor. This breaks out our expenditures, and you can see how it's breaking out. This is looking at both unrestricted and restricted dollars. So it's the percent there So it's the percent there that you're seeing for salaries and benefits is lower than it normally is and that is because of the one-time COVID relief funds that are not allocated primarily into salaries but rather into supplies and capital expenditures, things like that, that skews that. Our unrestricted percent is closer to about eighty-three percent, I believe, on the unrestricted side. Next slide. On the expenditure side, again, the increase is reflected in that second section. You see a 17 million dollar increase in materials and supplies. So we have put those ESER funds into the budget for ESER II and the rest of them are fairly minor. You can see different categories there, but that is the real big change from the first interim in terms of expenditures. Next slide, we just show all of our assumptions for last, this year and then the two years going into the future. And you can see on line eight shows the cost of living adjustment, which this year, you know, we came into the year with a zero percent COLA and actually, when you go back to, you know, prior to the January governor's budget for the coming years, we had a zero percent COLA in '21, '22, and '22, '23. Now we're reflecting the governor's proposal that was issued in January. The COLA increase is expected for next year at 3.84%, which encompasses the cost of living for the current year as well as next year, but it's all coming in next year and not in this year. And then the out year of '22, '23 is showing a COLA right now of 1.28%. On the expenditure side, we have increasing expenditures due to retirement pension fund increases. So if you look down there at line 29, for example, the CalPERS rate, which is currently 20% this year, will grow another 2.3% to 23% next year and 26% in the, that third year. And those are statewide rates, so those aren't just specific to Central, but those are statewide school district rates. This is our multi-year projection, which is, again, because of those cost of living adjustments on the revenue side that I just mentioned a minute ago, are improving. Looking out into the future, if you recall, at first interim, we were just at 5% in the third year on the reserve, which is really the minimum that the board established several years ago as a minimum reserve requirement in board policy. We're now looking at about 10%. Ideally, the statewide average is 17%, which is, represents about two months of expenditures. And so we're at that mark currently for this year and projected for next year, but you can see that it's starting to trickle down to 10% in the out year. We did, in the first interim, if you recall, we discussed that we had a $4 million reduction built into the third year and that has been removed due to the fact of the increase in revenues. We meet our 5% requirement of a fund balance without that. And so I think what's also helped us in budgeting is, you know, starting early, going back all the way to, you know, nine, 10 months ago, we started to review vacant positions as they came through to determine whether those needed to be filled during our distance learning time and we were able to save dollars as a result by freezing some positions. We also, if you recall, the board approved the PARs Retirement Incentive Program back in November, which also is helping our numbers going out into the future. And we also reduced department budgets at the beginning of the year. So those factors and other factors are improving our outlook. But again, we, as you look out into the future, you can see things get tighter and also we have that lower COLA in year three of 1.2%, which is going to make it a tighter budget year than what we're seeing in next year. This is just a recap of our other funds. It doesn't look too different really from the report at first interim, but we want to provide that to the board for information. Then the next slide is the COVID relief funds and this is where, as you know, there's been a lot of change throughout the year. So just to recap, in 2020, we began receiving funds starting in July, starting with what is known as ESER I, which is about 4.5 million dollars, which we are still utilizing those funds. The learning loss mitigation funds, a $12 million figure, was initially expiring in December but was extended and that's still being worked out through the budget process, through the trailer bills, but at this point, it looks like it will expire through May 31st, but those funds are being used. We use that on our technology purchases in the fall and a lot of other areas where we were supporting students. So we're still working through those funds. The next section in the middle there are the funds that were passed by the federal government at the end of December. These funds have not reached us yet, but this is what we're referring to as the ESER II funds, the 17 million dollar funds, which are usable through September of 2023. And then there's another small piece, which we don't have an exact amount yet as to what we're going to receive as a district, but it's probably about $900,000 on that same timeline. And then lastly, are the funds that we just heard about and were passed by the state legislature and approved by the governor, signed by the governor last Friday. This is broken into two sections, in-person instruction grants. Our estimate for the district is $5.2 million, which extends through the end of summer of 2022, as well as expanded learning opportunity grants, which we will be talking about in future board meetings, which is estimated at just over $11 million and is on that same timeline. And again, those funds have not been received yet, will be received later this spring. And as you're watching the news, you know that there's also a federal bill, COVID relief bill, this moving through rapidly through Congress, was passed by the House and passed by the Senate last weekend and referred back to the House to finalize the bill and is anticipated that that may be signed into law as early as another week. So we'll have more information on that going forward. We don't have dollar amounts to report to you yet on that, but we can provide that to you when that money is coming in. That money probably will come at a later date. It's going to take some time for that to work its way through the process and get into the districts locally. So as you can see, lots of one-time dollars there that are coming through at this time to help through the COVID pandemic. Lastly, based on our current assumptions, we do have, as you saw, some deficit spending looking the next few years. The COVID funds kind of help with that, but we are declining somewhat. Special Ed contributions from the general fund are continuing to increase and that's due to the fact that the state and federal government do not cover the full cost of the program. And so we have requirements in those programs that we have to provide services for that are not completely covered and so therefore, the general fund contributes into that. As I mentioned before, PERS and STIRS pension costs are on the increase and then we are opening a new high school, which will obviously take some one-time costs as well as ongoing costs as we transition into another high school. Our minimum reserve amount is 5%. That was approved by the board back in 2009. At this point, our outlook for the three years out is 10.8%. And the next milestone, big milestone, will be in May when the governor will release the '21, '22 budget year May revision, which will provide us with more clarification on what the budget's going to look like for the next several years and we'll use that information to bring back to the board in June our adopted budget. So with that, I will pause and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you. Before we take any questions from the board, do we have any comments from the public? So again, if there are any members of the public currently watching, if you have any questions or comments for this item, the number to dial is 559-276-3150. Any questions asked will be answered during our board discussion, so please just know that we are hearing your questions and we will address those that we're able to during board discussion.
President Creo, we do not have any calls in the queue.
Thank you. And so with that, any comments or questions from the board? Trustee Paul?
Thank you, President Creo. Pardon me. Mr. McLean, I got a couple of questions. One of the, one of the, one of the areas that you identified as a reason for being in a better position in the third year out was reducing budgets, department budgets. Can you, can you expand on that a little bit? What areas did we, did we restrict?
With our department budgets, we took some across-the-board cuts at the beginning of the year in order to help us to, yeah, to bridge the gap.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't know what that would mean. So department budgets, just across-the-board, what kind of cuts?
Yeah.
Like copying?
Yeah, typically, that's going to happen in, you know, four, what we call 4,000s and 5,000s, but expendable funds that we have some discretion over.
Okay.
Was there any, like, a percentage of just a reduction in the budget? Or can you elaborate and provide us a little more details as to those reductions? So I know, this is not the first time, but you've shared with us, and by you, I mean all assistants, superintendents, and our superintendent, holding any positions. So can you talk about whether that was one of the items that impacted reducing those department budgets?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, I was just trying to help and see whether we can provide more specific details, which I think is what trustee Paul is looking for as to what do those reductions look like? Is it a 5% reduction in each department budget? Or were there certain large plans that now are reduced? Or any hiring freezes within any of the departments? If you can elaborate on those specific reductions, I think that's what we're looking for.
Okay. Yeah, really, I think it varies from department to department. There was, it was provided, you know, an amount for each department to reduce, but again, how that is done is different in each, in each department because each department is so different. So transportation, for example, other departments are going to look different and some of those savings are going to be natural because of COVID. We were operating in a different manner than we would in a normal year. But each department, we looked at to see where we could make those reductions just to help with the numbers.
So, Avicar, so did the departments have a say in that?
Yeah, there is some discussion about what that would look like. Yeah, we did, we did talk about that.
So for sports, maybe we didn't buy new helmets for one year or something like that?
Yeah, I don't have specifics in front of me, but, but we did, you know, we did talk about departments.
I just made that up, no, no one told me that, I just made that up. So, I'm just trying to get an example.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it's going to look different in different departments.
Okay.
I would refer to it as a belt tightening.
Sure. Which, which we asked you to do, I think.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
So, a couple more questions, is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. With the COVID funds, there are specific boundaries or areas for the spend, correct? So it's not like we're dumping a bunch of money in the general fund. We have to use those for specific things. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, just so the public understands that?
Sure, yeah, each, each set of funds has guidelines and the different ones that you saw on the screen are, there's really a lot of similarities between the funds. Some, as you know, learning loss mitigation was, was more focused on what, what it sounds like, learning loss, whereas the other funds were a little bit more flexible in terms of the way they could be used. But we're talking about cleaning, technology, health and safety type expenditures, testing for the virus, you know, I'm trying to think what else here, food, professional development. Again, there's, there's a lot of variety and a lot of that was captured in the plan that the board received back in the fall, the local continuity plan, learning continuity plan that was, was brought forward at that time. But those are the basic outlines, PPE. Those are the, you know, COVID, COVID-type activities that would help us during this time.
Okay, and there are timelines on using the money, correct?
Yeah, each, each set of funds has a specific timeline.
Are they years, months?
Mostly years. The learning loss mitigations was, was the one that originally was slated to end in December and then was extended when the bill was passed by the federal government and December was extended longer and the state is weighing in on that timeline. But those, those funds were anticipated to be spent in this year, yeah.
And we feel comfortable that we can use those for the appropriate purposes during that period of time?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Cervantes and then trustee Chan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I have a question in regards to the in-person instruction grant at estimate 5.2 million. What exactly is that grant meant to be spent on? First, and then I have a second question. So just the boundaries of where that dollar and how those dollars have been, how that grant was actually awarded and where the funds are going to be going?
So that, that was the one that just passed last week and I believe that Ms. Davis is covering some of that in terms of the, the report on reopening. Is that accurate? No, not on that report, okay. Those, those funds are coming to districts and there are certain criteria that the districts have to meet in terms of reopening. And if you don't meet those criteria, the funds will be reduced. But our, under our current plans, we would be expecting to get 5.2 million dollars. And again, those.
I can come in and speak specifics if you want, Ms. Cervantes.
Thank you.
Some of the stuff outlined in the in-person instruction grant include COVID testing, cleaning, purchase of PPE, health and safety upgrades, certificate of classified salary and assistance in social and emotional mental support services are some of the things outlined in that in-person grant.
So it also incorporates some mental health, is it, for the social and emotional?
That's outlined in there too, yes.
Okay, so out of those four or five categories, we got to divide up that potentially 5.2 million?
Correct.
Okay. At, at 100-plus dollars per COVID test and I think we have almost 200 or so student athletes coming back that have to be tested weekly and potentially, if we open up even further, we could have as many as 500 students. Do we have an estimate cost of what that's going to cost a district?
Yes.
Per week?
Yeah, well, we're looking at right now is approximately, UnitedHealth is approximately $150 a test right now through UnitedHealth.
Correct.
However, we've signed actually an agreement with EOC just recently and EOC is going to help us with our student athlete surveillance testing at no cost to district.
Okay, so.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt? For those of us who may not be familiar, EOC, what does it stand for?
The Employment Opportunities Commission.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, with that being said, at $150 a test, do we have an estimate of what that's going to cost the district in the event that we had to pay for that, one? And then I'm spinning in a whole nother direction, so bear with me and I apologize for the amount of questions. And you don't have to have an exact dollar amount, but I'm sure that, you know, there's some calculated finger out there.
Roughly between 30 and 50,000 dollars.
Okay. And out of that, again, we go back to every dollar that we can save, right? Goes back to the students, hopefully, social, emotional, obviously some stipends, obviously some additional PPE filtration, wherever else. I'm just trying to let the public know that we're trying to be as fiscally responsible to try to save as many dollars as we possibly can to provide more intervention, whether it be social, emotional, whether it be. whether it be social, emotional, whether it be classroom intervention or, you know, labs, reading labs, math labs for the learning loss period of time that we've gone under. So it's not that we're not trying to be conscientious over how the dollars are being spent because we have plenty of money, we just throw and spend. We're trying to fiscally squeeze every dollar we possibly can to put back into the classrooms, back into the students. And I, 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 I think that's the consensus of the board here. And we ask that the public have a great, be empathetic with us through this process, that we're not trying to take anything away from anybody. We're trying to get as much as we can to provide as much services to our children as we can moving forward. So again, I wasn't, I didn't want to get too much in the weeds about, I just wanted an average cost. Just that alone would cost a district. That chews up almost half that grant. That alone. That testing alone would chew up almost half that grant. So the remaining dollars have to be spread out in those other categories. So I'm just asking people to be empathetic when we make these decisions on how we're going to do and what we're going to do. So I just wanted to paint that picture for those that maybe or maybe did not understand where I was trying to go with that. But thank you for that. And I apologize for coming out of the left field with that, but I think it's very important. I think most of the other funds, people have had a little longer to take a look at them. They got a little bit more of a balcony view. They understand how they're being spent, where they're being spent and, and, and what we're doing to, to be fiscally responsible on the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, trustee Chan?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. McLean, I would, I have sort of two sets of questions. The, the first, I just want to get a little bit, if you could share a little bit more about our child nutrition sort of expenditures and revenues. I know we were getting a number of different grants. I'm, I'm extremely happy that the, our district was sort of at the, at the front edge in, in terms of making sure that we were providing needed food. And, and we even went sort of above and beyond and tried in creating sort of mobile centers in terms of where, where access could be. I, I did think that there were certain sort of funds that, and, and maybe that's inclusive, but if you could kind of just share a little bit more about our child nutrition revenues and expenditures for this year?
Sure. Well, a- as you know, starting the year and, and with the distance learning, in spite of the fact that we've been doing, yeah, grab and go meals since the beginning of the year. And I think now as of last week, we, we have topped since August over a million meals that have been served in that manner. But in that environment, you're never going to be able to operate at, at the normal capacity that you would be operating at. And so we, we've been tracking that and, and providing those reports to the board going forward. But as we move back to in-person learning, we're going to see an uptick in our, in our utilization of our meals program and, and sort of a return to, to normal. And, you know, going into the year, we didn't know exactly what, at what point we would get to the point we're, are looking at right now. So, you know, we're expecting that the, for the, you know, remainder of the year, we'll see an uptick in, in revenues. And, and there is some ability to use COVID dollars to help offset. And there have actually been some increases in reimbursement rates that the state provided during the year to help with the revenues. But, yeah, that, that is an area that we're watching closely.
And, and just on that point, there, there's actually separate provisions in terms of what's been passed, at least in the, in the House and Senate specifically around sort of child nutrition. So I have a feeling we'll end up making up quite a bit of that. You know, the, the second question I have is, I, I think just really just sort of to help me un- understand and, and some of these things were there far before you. So sir, when I, when I compare our demographic study, and we, and we do this sort of quite regularly. So, you know, I have before me, of course, our 2017 study, again revised in 2019. I know it's unfair, you probably don't have these in, in front of you. But I, I'm trying to understand, is it like the, the trends that you showed, at least as far as our projections, were downward trend? Not, not, not like down a cliff, but, but it is a kind of a, a negative direction. When I see in terms of what the demographic studies presented to us, both in 2017, although more substantially in 2017, but again, returning when schoolwork is shared in 2019, both of them are actually up, upward trends. Some of that may be related to the pandemic in ways I may or may not understand. But I, I'm, I'm trying to understand, how can I square these? You know, I can see little, little bit off, but I would assume trend lines would be the same. But what you're showing is substantially different than what our demographic trends, you know, in, in two, three years out potentially, than what our demographic studies has, has shown at least, at least in the, in the two reports that I have before me. So I just wanted to see if you could kind of share a little bit, what data do we have that potentially our demographic studies did not have? Or, or how, how do we sort of square, like, how do we make sense then of, of the demographic studies that, that I assume, you know, other companies will be, continue to share with us?
Sure. Yeah, and the demographic studies, we're, we're projecting it as best can, can be done. Again, factors in this last year are very, you know, once, hopefully, once in a lifetime. But I, I would say, you know, if you look back over the last several years and even looking forward, I, I think you've seen a, a slow but steady growth. And for years, it was a, it was a substantial growth. And it's leveled off somewhat as you look at the projections now, it's starting to level off a little bit. But again, the farther, as you know, the farther you go out in time, the harder it is to predict what will happen into the future. And, and there's just a lot of dynamics going on right now. We got people migrating from other areas of the state. And we will, you know, we have our facilities master plan coming forward to the board here shortly. And so we'll be able to, to dive into that a little bit deeper and speak with the demographers as well as to what, what they're seeing. But, but yeah, this, this, I think we're glad to see that our enrollment is, is maintaining, at least when other districts are experiencing loss. And I think in the outlook, and if you look at the, the building around us, you, you see continued growth in our district. And I think we'll, we'll continue to see that in the years to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I just wanted to ask for clarification regarding our reserves. You mentioned, I believe, or I understood, that the 10% would be sufficient to support two months of expenses?
17% is two months of expenses.
Okay. And that two months of expenses, does that take into account the opening of CARZA?
It, it does, yeah, that, that does.
So do you happen to have the numbers for the 10%? I think it's what's being projected for the third year, if I remember correctly. Yeah, 10.89% is being projected as our reserves in year 2022, 2023. Do you have a rough estimate as to what that represents?
In terms of dollars?
In terms of expenses. So initially you said 17% is sufficient to cover us for two months of expenses. What does 10% provide?
Not sure I understand your question. The, the calculation works off of the expenditures that are, are listed there of 215 million dollars. You see that up above in the, in the third year, taking that as a percentage, the reserve as a percentage of that number?
So I, I think what is clear is it's going to be less than the two months of expenses. And, and I ask these questions and I ask you to clarify because in, in many of our discussions, we've heard comments from the public and, and even maybe some of us have been unclear as to what does that reserve represent? And how much money, what does that equate to? Are we just storing all this money and just keeping it stored there? And how much can it actually cover in the event that we have to use those funds? So I just wanted to draw and, and point the attention to, really, those reserves don't provide significant coverage to us. And especially when they start to reduce into the 10%. And of course, the concern would be that if we fall under the 5% and get closer to the 3%, we risk being taken over by the state because we as a board have failed to do our job and, and take action to be fiscally responsible. So I, I just wanted to, to get clarification because I assumed my, the two months of expenses was not the 10%, but I, I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, it is 17%. And, and so as you get, go from 10% down to, you know, half of 17 would be eight and a half percent. So then you're looking at one month. And, and when you think about it, and, and we have to make payroll every month, we got to pay our salaries of our staff and all of our other expenditures, that, that, that's not a lot of money when you look at it from that standpoint.
Okay. And I assume what the answer to this is, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The one-time funds that we're receiving, both from the state and federal, that we either have received or anticipate receiving, we don't factor those in to our reserves?
Not at this time, and because the, the revenues that have been received and are recorded are also expenditures were recorded. If you remember that earlier slide showed both revenues and expenditures had increased on the second interim. So we budget those out, assuming that they will be spent. Reality, some of that money will continue to be carried over into future years.
Thank you.
But again, those are restricted dollars that have to stay for restricted purposes.
Right. Okay. Trustee McMealing?
Thank you, Madam President. You mentioned the facilities plan, we're looking forward to seeing that. Was that revised after Measure D was passed or was most of that developed prior to?
You referring to the other funds page?
You know, just that your facility plan and your capital expenditures that you're, that were budgeted for.
Oh, yeah, it, it will reflect, yeah, the impact of Measure D.
Okay, was, so, well, my question is, is can we replace, if there was an economics uncertainty, can we replace general funds allocations that we did, that were originally dedicated for capital improvements with our general fund money and use Measure D funds for those projects? So in essence, putting the allocated general fund money into the reserves for economic uncertainty?
I understand you're, you're asking if we can reduce the general fund capital expenditures?
No, so whatever we were going to use in the general fund for our facilities and improvements, obviously we have Measure D money now. Theoretically, can we use Measure D money to, to fix or replace or to build and use our allocated general fund money that we were originally going to use for economic uncertainty?
Well, prior to Measure D, we had Measure C and we were using those funds and are continuing to use those funds. And, and if you recall, the resolution was passed earlier in the year to, to issue the remaining Measure C funds and Measure B. And so we've done that. So those, those funds fuel our, our projects and we had enough money through those funds to be able to complete the high school. But going into the future, because of Measure D, we were able to continue with our facility projects funds. If we had, had not passed Measure D, we would just have to hit the brakes, if you will, in, in terms of our, our future facility funding because the, the funds aren't there on the general fund side to do that.
Thanks.
Sure.
And I think trustee Meiling, to further address your question, there would be some limitations as to what those funds can actually be used, consistent with what was represented to the voters and what they understood those funds would be allocated towards. Additionally, the purpose of the, of the March 16th special workshop meeting that we have scheduled is to provide this board an opportunity to have those discussions. Are there certain capital improvements that administration has a plan and a proposal for that we would like to either move up on the list? Or that we're asking questions of where can we, where do we have additional funds to allocate for those improvements? Or potentially, and this is just pulling things out of my head, would be whether any of the funds, the one-time funds that we are being provided an opportunity to have those discussions of whether those can be used for any of those improvements. So maybe some of your questions will be able to get addressed. And a lot of it has to do with our discussion and our ability to direct administration based on our priorities as a board. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing nothing further, this item does require action. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee Solis, is there a second? I have a second by trustee Cervantes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, 7-0. Our next item is item three, approve 2021 ballot for CSBA delegate assembly. Assistant Superintendent Collegian?
Thank you, President Creo. On an annual basis, CSBA holds their annual delegate assembly election to fill any vacancies. Region 10B has four vacancies this year. The board can nominate up to four candidates. It's been brought to my attention that Valerie Davis withdrew from the election and the remaining candidates are Daniel Babshov from Kermit Unified, Will Johnson from Clay Joint Elementary, Nandib Singh Chan from our very own Central Unified, and Brandon Vang from Sanger Unified. Administration recommends the approval of the 2021 ballot for CSBA delegate assembly. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Hearing no public comment, any discussion by the board? Any questions from the board on the item? It's very exciting to potentially have two board members serve on the delegate committee, so that's fantastic. Hearing no comments or questions, is there a motion to approve?
I shall move.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee Cervantes, is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, 7-0. Oh, I'm sorry, any abstentions? I think you would be permitted to, to vote to put you on the ballot, but. We will record your abstention. So that's six yes votes and one abstention by trustee Chan. Thank you. Our next item is item L4, approve Liddell Elementary Energy Management System EMS Upgrade Project. Assistant Superintendent McLean?
Thank you, President Creo. So this is, as you said, for the Liddell Elementary Energy Management System, which is requiring an upgrade. That system dates back to 1997 and it, it's no longer functioning effectively and, and parts are obsolete now. And so in order to get it up to, to par, we, we need to replace the system. And, and so we went through a bid process. Bids were opened on March 1st and the bid summary is attached to the board. We had, we had two bidders and the lowest bidder and the responsive bidder was LCP Automation Incorporated with a bid of 118,000 dollars and change. This project would qualify for the federal COVID relief funds, which, which again, as, as was mentioned previously, these funds do allow for upgraded projects to improve the, the air quality in the classrooms and to help with the, reducing the spread of, of the virus. So we believe that this will be helpful for the school and are bringing this for action tonight. And, and we are also looking at our other schools as well. This one was, was in a, a, a need that was, was urgent. But we are continuing to analyze all of our school systems. And, and as you know, we've been making a lot of upgrades and we've been talking about that. But in terms of upgrading systems, th- this is the first one to, to come up.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Okay. Trustee Paul?
Mr. McLean, a quick question. Is there a, remind me, is there a pre-qualification process for bidders on this size of project?
There is, and, and those requirements are set out in the, in the bid documents.
Okay, so the, the bid, bids are taken from qualified vendors, not from vendors at large, correct?
Right, and there's certain licensing requirements and things like that that have to be met.
Okay. So, okay, that's, you've answered my question, thank you.
Sure.
What's the life expectancy of a, of this kind of system? So I know that the one currently at Liddell is from 1997 and it has failed at this point. So what is the expected life of, of these programs?
They, they should last for, for quite a while. I couldn't give you a, a exact answer on that. That's not my area of expertise, but I can, I can get some more information from you, but.
Yeah, I would just be curious. I mean, I think I, I'm glad that it's being replaced and I'm glad that you're, you've shared with us that we're looking at other school, at other, other school sites to make sure that we are replacing them, especially if we have the special funding. I just want to make sure that perhaps this should be on a list that within 10 years or within eight years, administration or members of the board are asking questions about this so that we start replacing and, and keep our systems running as efficiently and effective as, as possible and, and as safe as well for all of our teachers and, and students and staff in, in those facilities. Hearing no further questions, I will move to approve this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a second by trustee Cervantes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. Our next item is item five, approve energy savings contract with Synergistic LLC. Assistant Superintendent McLean?
Thank you, President Creo. So this is the contract that we were discussing at the last meeting. And I do have again with us tonight on the phone, in case there's any questions, Mr. Matt Bauer and Mr. Jonathan Ward from Synergistic. Just, just to recap from the last time, they have significant experience in helping organizations reduce. from Synergistic. Just, just to recap, from the last time, they have significant experience in helping organizations reduce energy consumption, and typically see a savings of, of over 20% of existing energy costs. And they provide a lot of expertise and consulting, bring to the table to, to help us with our energy bills, to look at ways to reduce those bills, and, and based on their analysis of our, of where we're at, that they would expect that we could save a net savings of over $2 million over the next five years through this, this program. So, I think this, this provides a, a great opportunity for the district to look at reducing its energy costs, reducing the amount of money that we spend on utility bills, and instead freeing up dollars to be used on, on higher purposes. There is a guaranteed cost savings on this, that if the savings do not cover the cost of the program, that Synergistic will provide that difference back to the district in order that the district has no, no risk of losing dollars on this program. It is a five-year contract, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any public comment? Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Paul?
Thank you. Mr. McLean, a question for you on, on this item. So, we're gonna, we, we've got a guaranteed savings of 20, 25%, or over, over $2 million over five years, or something like that. Is that right?
That's the projected savings, yeah. That's, that's not a guaranteed amount. The guarantee is that the savings will exceed the cost of the program. Otherwise, the, the company will, will reimburse the cost of that, of the program that does not generate savings. Does that make sense?
So, the concern I have, just, just to throw it out here, and I think you answered my question, but just to throw it out there, we're, we're not just swapping money, right? We're just, I mean, there is going to be a realized savings over and above the cost of consultant, of consultants, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Now, the second, the corollary question to that is, is the savings realized going to be, is that over and above whatever kinds of, I guess, modifications to systems? Weather stripping, you name it, that could go into, into fixing whatever is identified to be the issue? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, they, they will look at how savings are being generated. For example, they do not take credit for our, our solar energy savings that are previously contracted. That doesn't figure into their calculation, their, their savings. And, and I'll, I'll let them speak as well here to this question, to how, how they calculate savings. But, yeah, they, they only take into account the, the impact of, of what their company is able to do in terms of modification of how we use our systems. It's very much a systems approach of looking at, you know, are we efficient? You know, they have great software now that wasn't even available five years ago to be able to look at, at usage and see where we might be using our system in a way that's inefficient or ineffective, and helping us to, to realize those savings. So, if you like, I can, I can have them chime in on that as well.
Yeah, wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Mr. Bauer, are you, are you there?
I am, Steve.
Okay, I hope, were you able to hear the question, or do you need to hear that again, or can you contribute to that question?
I was not able to hear it. I apologize.
Okay, could you just recap the question, Mr. Paul?
Yeah, so, the question is, is that will the savings be over and above whatever, say, I guess, mitigating costs that would be involved in fixing whatever situations we have, you know, whether it's weather stripping or, you know, fouled filters or whatever, you know, major repairs that need to be done on HVAC systems? Are we talking about a savings projected of, of over $2 million over five years, considering those potential costs, or not?
That's a good question, and I would say that we do not take those repair costs into consideration with our projections. We realize that if there are some things that need to be repaired, we have done the due diligence upfront to make sure that those costs are not significant enough to impact the net savings that we projected back to the district.
So, just to repeat back what I think I heard, the answer to that would be maybe, but not necessarily. Is that, am I catching that right?
No, I, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. We, we would not require the repair to impact the projected net savings.
When you say you wouldn't require it to, I'm not sure I understand the way you worded that.
The net savings that we're projecting do not have a repair cost associated with them.
Okay, so, there could be pretty significant costs that would eat into that projected savings?
You know, we've, we've implemented in, in older buildings and in newer buildings, and sometimes there are minor repairs that need to happen, but we're really about the optimization of your existing equipment without requiring repairs or replacements for those, those deficient pieces of equipment.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Trustee Solis?
Not much a question, more of a statement. I sort of see this as falling under the responsibility of facilities and the duties and responsibilities as a board that administration has totalized. Facilities will perform, especially with our newer buildings. That being said, I see this as a duplication of services, unless we're talking about taking away some responsibilities for facilities. So, I'm not going to be supporting this today. Thank you.
If I could have Mr. Bauer just respond to, to the comment. Is that, is that okay? Mr. Bauer, did you hear the question or the comment?
I did not.
Okay. Just related to how, how does your services, I guess, compare to what our existing staff is, is able to, to work towards? How, how is it different, and how is it not replacing what is already there?
Sure. Well, we'll be supporting the program with a full-time Synergistic-employed energy specialist that is fully dedicated to implementing the program. So, he or she will be at that school district, at your school district, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the focus is really on maintaining comfort, ensuring healthy classroom environments, and driving down consumption when it's not necessary. So, while there may be some really good efforts, and the data shows that the maintenance and operations team are diligent and have a conservative mindset, we can take things to a whole different level by focusing with our engineering support the efforts of that energy specialist.
So, yeah, in, in my experience in working with the company previously, is that, is that it's, it's an add-on. It's not to replace, it's not to even, yeah, try to duplicate what, what's already being done. And there are a lot of efforts that go on now. It just takes it to a, a level that is, is not there currently, because they, they have a level and a sophistication of, of what they do to bring it to, to a greater savings than if, if we were doing it without the help of the company.
Thank you. I share some of the same concerns. To me, it would seem, as, as Trustee Solis shared, that the expectation, at least my expectation, even understanding that this is intended to augment the work that is already being done, whether then we need to explore, actually, I'm not even going to make that comment. It just seems like we can be more efficient with our use of our human resources to be able to meet those needs. I understand that the guarantee is that it will generate savings that either will match or exceed the cost. I'm just not prepared, I, I'm not sure, that, that's just not enough for me at this point, to be able to, to justify making this expenditure. Because even in the long run, if it does result, it, it has to result in either breaking even or we need to generate more of a savings, I would be concerned with the type of savings that it would require, I'm sorry, with the type of changes that would be required to make those savings. So, some of the comments that I received from some of our teachers would be, their classrooms are already cold. And so, are we going to reduce that temperature so that they're even more cold or in quote-unquote "worse" conditions? And that, to me, would not necessarily be a savings, and in fact, would be a concern. Our teachers are working hard, and our administration is working hard in these buildings. I don't want to make them feel any more uncomfortable than some of the circumstances they have to deal with, or already making them. So, I just, I, to me, it's really hard to justify, at this point in time, making this commitment. But I, I'd love to hear from any of my other colleagues as to what their perspective is, and, and whether they see that the, the savings that it can potentially generate is worth approving. Trustee Paul?
Yeah, I, I'd put that to, to our representative on the, on the phone. But, but before we do that, I just wanted to throw in a comment or two. Just looking through the presentation that we received, or the piece of information that we received, in addition to the contract, it looks like we're going to have a bunch of mechanical folks, engineers, people with good understanding of HVA systems and systems in general, that will have at our disposal. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McLean.
That's correct.
But those are, in my view, those are areas of expertise that, that a school district doesn't have. And, and it seems to me that, on a consulting level, we, we want to hire experts, and we want to hire people that, that can provide the expertise to help us be more efficient, use, optimize our systems and those types of things. So, I see that. I was just concerned about the amount of the contract and how that, you know, and how that was gonna, you know, how the, how the numbers balanced out. So, I think you answered my questions to sat, to my satisfaction, anyway. And I would just throw that out for consideration.
Thank you. Anyone have any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing no further comments or questions, what are the wishes of the board on this item?
Move to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Paul. Is there a second? I will second the item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will also support the item. Any opposed? Please say.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Trustee Solis?
Oppose.
Oppose, okay.
Oppose.
Any abstentions? Okay, so, motion does not carry, and the item is not approved. We will move on to our next, thank you both for your presentation.
Thank you.
Our next item is Item 6, approve purchase of sanitizing devices.
Thank you, President Creo. So, these are sanitizing devices that are, have been shown to be a safe and effective means for students and staff to, to use in the classroom and, and wherever they may, may be to eliminate viruses and bacteria, including COVID-19. This is another purchase of using one-time COVID relief funds, the amount of $95,913, which would purchase 7,100 devices that would cover our enrollment for the high school level, grades nine through 12, as well as for staff, and administration is, is recommending the approval of these devices at this time.
Thank you. So, at this time, we'll allow 30 seconds to pass to allow any public comment. Any members of the public wishing to call, at this time, please dial 559-276-3150. It's my understanding that there's a bit of a delay from our presentation to our viewers, and so, we will allow 30 seconds to pass for any members of the public wishing to speak on this item.
President Creo, we do have a call that's going to be coming in from Laura Bolton.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Hi, you are on with the board right now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, it's really, really echoey, so I'm sorry if I sound funny. But I watched a little video for those sanitizers, and I'm having a hard time understanding what their purpose is. Are we getting these just for personal use? Are we expecting the teachers to be using these to sanitize the classroom? I'm not really understanding this. They, they don't look like they're for janitorial use, so can you clarify?
Sure. These are, yeah, handheld sanitizers. There's, there's no expectation other than to provide staff and students with, with an added ability to, to sanitize, whether it be door handles or, or computer equipment, or phones, things like that, that, that are, students and staff come in contact with. But there's no specific expectation on, on use. It's just, it's another tool in the toolkit, if you will, for staff and students to try to mitigate the virus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other calls at this time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Trustee Solis?
Correct me if I'm wrong, these are the individual little egg things?
Yeah, they're kind of, I would say, the size of a, like a water bottle, basically.
And they've already been checked out as far as allergic reactions from the children, since you're going to be handing the students these things?
Yeah, they've, they've been around for a while. They're, they're on the EPA list as, as non-toxic and, and safe to, to use for, for students.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was kind of under the impression it's a dispenser, so that you're actually going to hand them out to students, and people can use them under their own discretion. If they feel uncomfortable grabbing the knob, they can spray the knob before they use it, that type, or de-sanitize their hands. Had we looked at wall dispensers and things of that nature, or do we have anything like that in play at this point in time?
I mean, we have other sanitization measures that are going to be in place at our schools. This is just one that would be provided to each...
Additional?
Individual, yeah. You know, you may be out and about on campus and not in the vicinity of, of equipment that is stationary, and so, this just provides another measure of protection.
Okay, so, students, faculty, everybody would be dispensed one of these misting go, and use it at their own discretion?
That's correct. It's at their discretion.
In the event that they should come back and say, "I lost mine. Can I have another one?", things of that nature. Is there a buffer in that 7,100 that we're looking at purchasing?
Is there what? I'm sorry.
In the event that they should say they lost it, and they didn't, or they didn't bring it, "Can I have another one?", that type of thing. Is there a buffer in that 7,100 that we're looking at purchasing in, in that, in that amount?
There, there is a little bit. There, it's really designed just to have one per person at this time.
Okay. And then, the other thing I had was, how long would one of these last? I mean, how many uses would they get out of one of these? And if it's in here, I apologize, I did not read it. Did they get like 100 uses, 50 uses?
It, it's a misting device, if you saw how it works, and so, it provides up to 40 minutes of, if you were just to hold it for 40 minutes, it would provide 40 minutes. Obviously, when you're using it to sanitize, you would hold it for just, it would just be for a brief period. But, so, it would result in, you know, I don't know, hundreds and hundreds of uses.
Oh, hundreds and hundreds of uses, okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Trustee Solis?
And I forgot. And is this going to be covered under our COVID funds?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Trustee Maylie?
Does this go in a keychain? Or do they have, where do they keep this at?
Where do they keep it?
Yeah, they carry around a bottle all day?
Yeah, it would just be a backpack item.
Any other questions or comments? What are the wishes of the board on this item?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by trustee Solis. Is there a second? I have a second by trustee Brooks. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries six zero with one abstention by trustee Chan. And that concludes our information items. Next, we move on to our information items. Just a friendly reminder to any of our community members currently watching us. If you wish to address the board on any of the item, please call when the item is called, when the presentation begins, so that we can ensure that we take your comment as they will be taken right after the presentation concludes. Upon receiving all public comment, we will move on to board discussion. And so with that, we will hear item M1, receive information on reopening schools for 2020, 2021. Assistant Superintendent Davis will lead us off.
Yes, thank you. And we'll start with the presentation. So I'll give you just a minute to orient yourself so we don't blind you with that. Thank you. We'll start first with an update on data. As you can see, this presentation was updated earlier today when our local health department released today's numbers. As you can tell, the positivity rate and the health equity metric continue to be in red and declining. All of the numbers are declining, which is what we're looking towards. We are still in purple for the COVID positive cases per day at 12.6. We are projected to be in red within the next week or two. And with spring break close behind, we believe the planned in-person instruction for elementary to begin April 12th is a reliable plan based on this information. We have shared with our public, starting last week, some specific information on elementary schedules. You have asked this of us in the past, which has helped getting our community prepared, give them time to make arrangements. And we definitely want to do that. And I'm going to go into this. I certainly don't expect you to read the fine print that's on the screen right now. So I'm going to break it down just a little bit to help explain what we can plan for. Again, our goal, as you can see, is opening the week of April 12 through 16. So Monday is the first day of return from spring break. That is an online day, so students would be coming to campus beginning as early as Tuesday, depending on group, what group they're assigned. And I do want to make special mention that when we're talking about opening at elementary, this also includes our preschool programs. They have been following the same schedule as our elementary all throughout this process. If we look specifically at our transitional kindergarten and kindergarten schedules, the group assignments are Group A and B, and those are based on neighborhoods of which we transport from. Our goal was to keep neighborhoods of students that may play together, eat together, have daycare together, traveling to campus together as well. What is unique about both Kinder and Transitional Kindergarten, as you'll see in the schedule, A and B are going to come to school at the same time. Group D is students whose parents have selected for them to have distance learning and stay involved in their classroom, but remain on Zoom. The goal of the feedback we got from our teachers in a pilot kindergarten classroom that we were working from is that four days a week is critical for our earliest learners. They've not been in classrooms yet. This is their first schooling experience and the consistency was critical. So the schedule is built with that in mind. The majority of our, of the schedule, as you can see, is that students would be on campus 8:30 to 11:00 in the morning and then would depart. And then the students that are distance learning would join their teacher from 12:00 to 2:30 and be in a class of distance learning students getting the support that they need. Specific schedules for all of these that I'm going to speak to will come from each school campus. This gives parents a general idea to begin to plan for. When we look at first and second grade, we also are looking at four days a week for these early learners. For some of them, if you think about it, a first grader has spent the majority of their academic career thus far in a distance learning setting. And so we heard the conversation about can we make this work four days a week? How can we do that? And so after spending some time, we were able to work with our transportation team and our teachers. And also our numbers allow for six feet of distancing apart for students and allow us to have them on campus, both Group A and B, 8:30 to 11:00. And then the time following 11:00 AM is online. Obviously, they would need time for lunch. And then they would join their teachers in small group instruction in the afternoon. So I do really want to express how important, when we're thinking about the day for our students, there is a time that they are at school and then there is time throughout the day, typically up until about 2:30, 3 o'clock, that students would be joining in small group instruction. That was some feedback we got this fall was that parents felt or thought that once 12:30 hit and Zoom calls were over, there was no more school. And our teachers have had to really work in different ways to connect and explain how important the intervention and small group support is after the lunch hour. So as parents plan, they can certainly look to the schedule on when they would be on campus and then know that that small group time is critical that they participate in as well. When we look at third through sixth grade, this is the group that there is going to be a rotating schedule. The class size is a little bit larger than our TK2. The age of the child is a little bit obviously older. They've been in school a little bit more. And while we would love them to be here four days a week, we can't abide by the health guidance of six feet distancing for the group size. But we can bring them on two days a week and three days online. This is a very common schedule throughout our valley. So I think for people who are connected or network around the valley, they'll see a common schedule. This would allow a Group A, a group of students to be on campus Tuesday and Wednesday, 8:30 to 12:30. And I'm looking at this schedule. I'm sorry about that. It's supposed to be Tuesday and Thursday and then Wednesday and Friday. My apologies.
I was going to ask that because I'm like, I'm confused.
No, 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 no. So my apologies. The graphic that went out is correct. The slide is wrong. Group A will be there Tuesday, Thursday at school, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, online. Group B will be there Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, online and Wednesday, Friday at school. And Group D, distance learning for the full week. Fortunately, what has been communicated out is right. My apologies that with a duplicate of slide is not correct for you. The mention, and I know you had some questions for Mr. McLean earlier about what the funding is. This doesn't specifically indicate what the funds can be spent for, but we do have additional funds coming in that we've spoken about for the in-person grants. The reason I bring this up is when we talk about reopening, there's some specific guidance for receipt of the in-person instructional grant funds. We have, by the legislation, it says by April 1st. However, we are on spring break at that time. So it is the first day of school following April 1st that the incentive from the state is to be open by that time. And the way spring break falls and the way the data lays out, it does really work for us to be opening as we return from spring break. TK through six is our plan to be open for instruction, so it meets that obligation. And then there is a new factor in it that requires us to offer instruction to at least one full grade level in the seventh through 12th grade range, which fits a priority we've been speaking to you about, making sure our seniors have the supports they need to graduate on time and meet the requirements and get the support that they have and need for. We will talk in just a minute about our secondary return. We have to have safety plans in place, which we already do. And given those factors, if we meet those in April as planned, there is in-person funding that's been spoken of earlier. The second amount of money is more of a longer commitment of support for expanded learning. Goes through 2022 and recognizes that we have a lot of unfinished learning that occurs when the day is shortened, as it has been. Our instructional minutes statewide have been reduced, given the distance learning timeframe. And so we know students will have some learning that is unfinished or some supporting standards that create gaps for students that we need to address in the coming years. We know it won't happen overnight. We've studied some information from other places that have handled school closures for lengths of time. And we know that we have to have a robust plan that will last us multiple years to address this. Now, you can see some of the intent of the Expanded Learning Fund is for, a majority of the funds are to be used for in-person supports for students. Small amount can go towards remote work. I mentioned secondary return. In December, we brought to you a recommendation that our elementary return in red. And you approved both that and that our secondary would return in orange. Currently, we have a parent survey. We are asking that parents complete it by Thursday. We have about 2,500 of our students who have already responded. Our secondary teams felt that they needed one more check-in with family members. We had a very low response rate in the winter for secondary, very different for elementary. And so we currently are serving and asking them, what is their preference for the remaining up to 40 days of school following spring break? And we'll use that information to develop a recommendation that we will bring to you on March 23rd. We know the tier advancement, the definitions of red, orange and yellow are adjusting as vaccines become more available in our communities. We want to have a plan that not only includes our seniors and our special populations that we currently have in place with cohorts, but we want to add in more of our seventh through 11th grade students as well. And so we would like to share with you now our intent to bring back on the 23rd a recommendation for what secondary's return can look like much more specifically. And of course, with the right slides for you, so you can see what a schedule would be as well. We know people have questions. And before I turn this over to Mr. Klegian, I would just like to mention it is imperative that our families continue to watch social media, their Parents' Square outlets for information coming from their campus specific to the schedule of their schools for an elementary student. And when they have questions, to reach out to their school or to us so that we can help. We know that it's complicated to make this transition. We have a lot of excited people that want to make sure that we can support students as we get them back on campus. And at this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to the next part of our reopening with Mr. Klegian, and I'll take this off the screen.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. A few reminders from our side of the House. United Health Centers did provide mass vaccination clinics for our employees on March 3rd and 4th. We had over 900 employees register for the vaccinations. We also are in partnership with Dr. Baz's office is also providing additional opportunities for our employees to get vaccinated at his office. Just a reminder to our community, our families and all those who are watching, as we come into the return to campus plan, just a strong reminder to all that we are still requiring all of our employees to take daily health screeners every morning prior to coming to work. And also that surveillance testing continues for our employees every month as well, which is taking place every third Tuesday in the East Campus parking lot. Again, provided through United Health Centers. Also, just recently, great news, the Economic Opportunities Commission, EOC, we entered an agreement with them to provide COVID testing to all of our student athletes as well, to no cost to the district, and they begin on March 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the presentation for administration.
That does.
Great, thank you. Do we have any comments from the public? And again, if we can allow 30 seconds, if we don't already have callers waiting.
President Creo, while we wait, I did double check as well what the flyer that went out is accurate. And this presentation is on our website, so we'll make sure that people don't get confused by that. That's the last intent that we want, is to confuse them with those days.
So again, if there is any member of the public wishing to address the board on this item, the number to dial is 559-276-3150.
President Creo, we still do not have any calls on the line.
Okay. Hearing no comments from the public, we will now close public comment and move on to board discussion. Are there any questions or comments from the board? We'll start with trustee Cervantes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question in regards, I took a couple of emails from some of my constituents. And the great point that they bring up, the first one is in this particular case, this individual had a second grader that will be leaving school at 11 o'clock and then has a sixth grader who provides care for the younger sibling and will be getting out of school at 12:30. So there's obviously an hour and a half. And then based on, I believe, some of their care was going to be out of the district. So even though we were providing bus transportation, he would technically have to get off twice, once to go over to pick up the second grader at 11: and then figure out some type of, some way to get back to the school at 12:30 to pick up the sixth grader, to take him to watch the second grader. So I know that's obviously extremely challenging to do the schedule. But can you talk a little bit about why the schedules did not mirror each other a little better? Or at least time-wise?
Sure. We had looked at originally having all students on the same schedule. The instructional minutes for Transitional Kindergarten and kindergarten are 180 minutes. A sixth grader's schedule is 240 minutes at a minimum. The request came in for the younger students who will be in a mask and sitting in an arrangement that doesn't have as much exploration or play as a part of their academics. Was there any way that we could change the timeframe, but give them four days rather than two days on and two days off? And so that was, that is the difference in the schedule. We are looking at what after-school program can offer or afford when we run into situations like that. And so I expect that we'll be all the more information out to our families on, you know, if that would meet their needs. In the case of what you're describing, if we use that example, two of the days are complicated because for that sixth grader, two days there at home. Their sibling that's younger is there all four days. So there's two days that are a little bit more complicated. So we've reached out to our after-school program and are looking at some opportunities to help, should that be the circumstance. And then certainly, I think, by giving them this much time in leadway, trying to acknowledge that this is going to be an adjustment. They've had a schedule, they've probably done amazing things to make it work so far this year, and this does put a change in it. So trying to give them as much lead time as we could to make those arrangements. We can't bring in all of our third through sixth graders four days a week, but we can provide that balance between online and in-person to give them some of that, which we think is critical. And they do require more minutes of instruction. And so to reduce them to 11, we just really felt was too much of a change to asynchronous work or independent work that we just weren't willing to give up for them.
They're very grateful for our efforts to try to open the schools and very willing to try to work with us. But at the same token, just really trying to put their arms and mind around the fact, the complication between the two. So I appreciate you giving that definition. And then my second question really quick was about what percentage of our students and parents are looking at not returning? And Group D?
For elementary, we, it's about, and it depends on the grade level, but it's somewhere between 60 and 70% returning and 30 to 40% staying on distance learning. We're, of the preliminary information for our secondary, we're seeing a similar trend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Trustee Solis? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Trustee Solis?
I'd like to thank the staff for, when you did your scheduling, to maximize our parents' ability to decide. Some of the parents are going to be more than comfortable about sending their children back to school. There's going to be some of them that are not going to be comfortable with it, that we're giving them the option. And it's up for them to choose what they feel comfortable and what best fits their family. Thank you.
Trustee Paul?
Thank you, President Correa. Ms. Davis, a few questions in light of some of the other questions that have been asked. I mean, our limitation in bringing students back is to be able to house them with appropriate separation primarily. So, you know, it helps to remember that, I think. But considering if it's, if we're in the neighborhood of 30, 40% that have indicated that they're not going to bring their students back full-time or keep them remote, what's the realistic possibility that we could fill the classroom with the rest of those? What does that look like? Is that possible? Is there, do you have any idea of a timeline? Is there any movement in how guidance is being either requested or received to change that?
Right now, we are abiding by the Health Department's recommendations, as you noted, for the six-foot distancing and the appropriate transportation. So our schedules are built on what we can safely transport numbers-wise. And so when we look at how many students live in neighborhoods transported, Group A, Group B, that is a predominant factor. We can't, at this third through sixth grade, we couldn't combine them and bring them all back. We don't have the space for them to meet the obligations for Health Department at this current time. What we know, and we've spoken of this before in other meetings, that it does change over time as more is learned about mask-wearing and, you know, distancing. We see some movement in, as health numbers and communities get better, there can be changes in terms of, you know, how far apart desks are. Four feet is one of them that you can see if you were to read something about, you know, some of the school districts that have very low outbreak. They are able to petition for seating that is closer together. So we expect that to be one of the adjustments down the road made, but not where we are right now. We still have high level of widespread issues and vaccinations just coming in. So we are continuing to bring you, you know, a proposal that fits those strict guidances to make sure, you know, we're keeping our students safe that are returning to school. We'll continue to watch and read and stay current and bring that to you for any adjustments. We know that we have to start planning for next school year. And so we've got to be aware of what will become available for us to do for future. Right now, what we have is, as we move into red, the parameters our schedule's set on are six-foot distancing and spacing on busing.
So with the current split, let's say that the numbers were 50% of parents wanted to continue remote education. We could, with that spacing, we could accommodate full-time instruction for those that wanted to return, correct?
Potentially, yeah. So if, to that point, the more that opt to be home, then, you know, the fewer students that would be coming to campus and could be accommodating. But we're not seeing that trend in terms of their initial requests. And this is our first opening for us since last March. So, you know, they have reported what they're planning to do in April. We can certainly provide updates on, did that come to fruition? Did they all who said were going to bring their students back?
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I do just want to make a comment and probably administration can clarify whether I'm correct or not. But I do want to just make clear that we're not making decisions to return to school based on the state funding that's going to be provided, the in-person instruction grants. It just happens to coin side, which is a great benefit for our district, to potentially be able to receive those funds consistent with a trend that we anticipate transitioning to a red, which was the vote that the board voted for back in December, to remove, or to return our TK through six, or actually TK through second, right? Was that, we made a distinction?
TK through six, elementary, yes.
Right. To return our TK through six. So I just want to make that clear, that we're not being driven by the financial incentives. But in fact, that we are seeing a trend in our community, which of course is a result of all of us participating, everyone watching and listening, and the members of our community complying with the social distancing and doing as much as they can not to gather and to reduce the spread, which we continue to encourage you. I continue to ask that you comply with that. Our goal is to bring our students back based on our limitations. And I think to Trustee Paul's comments, one of the things that I would like to request, if there is an opposition from the rest of the board, that we get an update. And if we need to, if we're able to bring more students back based and in compliance with the restrictions that we accommodate our parents and our students to bring them back into the classroom. So I just wanted to state that and make sure that that's consistent with why we're seeing this plan come before us and some of the new information and potential plan that we'll see come before the board on March 23rd.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Hearing no further comments or questions on this item, we will move on to our next item. M2, receive information on secondary courses of study. Assistant Superintendent Davis?
Thank you. You have before you two courses. We haven't had any of these come for a while, but we have two courses coming forward for action by you. You'll see the first course is World Cultures. It is a one semester course. This course is moving our work towards an ethnic studies course. And our history, social science team worked hard to put together from other examples around the state and what is needed for our students in high school that we believe to politically, socially, and economically become more conscious and members of society, active members of society. This course replaces what was our freshman requirement computers course. And is actually, as you see, identified as a local graduation requirement. It's paired with the health requirement for students. It is also a one semester course. You'll see in this course that is being submitted to you, it is available to a student should they be in ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, whereas the freshman requirement was to be taken as a freshman. As we've spoken of, we want to be flexible in terms of what a student's four-year plan is to make sure they have their electives in the grade level that they need. And so we do recommend that this be open, be completed by the time they graduate, but that it be open depending on what grade level they need to take it in. The second course, it is an elective, by the way. The second course is Contemporary Issues in Education, is an English 11 course. And it would be placed for our students that are in the CTE pathway for education. And so it is an appropriate and already-approved A to G course for English 11 for students. And it would, as you can see, weave in both the industry sector expectations for the CTE pathway of education or future educators, along with the English 11 course. These courses already have materials, but they could require some supplemental resources. And so as noted, it doesn't have as much of a financial impact as sometimes a course does where we have to buy all new books or materials. We anticipate that the teams that have developed these courses might need supplemental materials, and we will set aside some of our instructional materials budget to allow for that as they begin. After any questions you may have, we do recommend this return for action so they can get it to their master schedules.
Thank you. So at this time, we will allow 30 seconds to pass for any members of the public wishing to address the board on this item.
President Correa, we do not have any calls in the queue.
Thank you. Hearing no comments from the public, any comments or questions from the board? Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a quick question in regards to the World Culture. That's obviously going to be offered on all three high schools. But on the Contemporary Issue English course, it looks like it's only going to be offered at Central and Central East. Is there any reason why it's not going to be offered at the new high school?
This is for, it's a junior class, English 11, and so it would begin where we have our juniors.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Sorry, Trustee Chan?
Well, I just want to give kudos to all the staff hours that went to developing this course. I'm really excited about the World Culture, the Culture course developed by Mr. Beijan and Mrs. Teresi. I mean, I think it's actually not only on the leading edge in terms of California, but specifically locally to highlight groups like the Armenian, the Mong community, and others that usually don't find anywhere in our syllabus. Sorry.
Is it working?
Yeah, I just wanted to give kudos to, you know, all our staff, but especially Mr. Beijan and Mrs. Teresi for creating such a cutting-edge course and especially honing it to the Central Valley communities like the Mong community, the Armenian community, and others that would not otherwise ever find a place in a curriculum. I'm very excited about it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, this item will return to the board agenda on March 23rd. Is there any objection to having a return under consent? Great, this will return under consent. And that'll conclude our information items. We have no comments under advanced planning. Additional information and closing comments, does any board member have any requests for information or additional comments they'd like to make? I just want to remind our board that we do have a special training set for March 16th, and that'll take place, is that taking place here? Yes, right, okay. It'll be here. So bring your questions regarding facilities and our facilities plan with you. If not, you can formulate them then. Our next board meeting is scheduled, well, the March 16th, 2021, special training. And then our next board meeting is for March 2030, 2021. 6:00 PM for a closed session, 7:00 PM for a public session, or as soon as they're after. And we do not need to adjourn to closed session or reconvene. And so what are the wishes of the board regarding adjournment? I have a motion by Trustee Chan. I have a second by Trustee Brooks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.